I really want the city to work together, really want the city to work together. And once those bodies were both formed and been a push all the way through, let's get us all together. Let's have a conversation, let's talk. And let's see how things align. And so one of the things that we did, and I think we all thought that we would hopefully be a little harder with our strategic business plans. So we could lay them side by side. But what we said was, Jordan said, is council meeting, my commission. What, what do you want to talk about? And what do you want to talk about? And really, let's try to focus on only the things that we both agree that we want to talk about. That doesn't mean that this meeting can't happen again, that's a meeting can't happen more often. It just means as a start off, if no strategic business plan is already in place, these are the ones that some of it flooded to the top. And one of the ones that everybody said was tourism, the ports role, the tourism committee's role, the city council's role. How does that all mesh? And how do we do that better? And what does that look like? So I want to thank Commissioner Lee to encourage us to put together a work agenda on this. To keep us all directed and kind of pointing in the same direction. So what we did is we just started looking at the events and how they fall throughout the, throughout the month. Excuse me, throughout the year. So if we look at the gorge water all run. And I, I think what I'm about to do, start to elicit a bit of a discussion for you guys to sort of jump in on what you're, come up you see. But I know that the city's benefits and responsibilities. Really, yes, I mean during the talk, they don't have a tremendous amount of responsibilities around a number of the events to come here. If there are things that take place on one of those, that's usually go through ODOT on that. And really, I'm with, and then as far as the benefits of it, the more people we bring into town, the more pressure it puts on the actual infrastructure, which is what the city is responsible for. So it doesn't help there. If we can get them to spend the nights. And we can get some more of those TLT taxes coming, then the city kind of sees the benefit there. That starts feeding back into dollars that the city can spend. When we look at ports benefits and responsibility, and that's in just this event, but it starts to trail down. We really target large events and large producers who don't put a whole lot of responsibility on the port. We're stretched as staff as it is, just to keep this cart open and functioning for the public, much less to say, oh, and this week we're throwing a big rate. We're throwing a bigger bank. So we really do look to producers of event that take on responsibilities. There is a port benefit because they do pay us to be here. However, that benefit is far below what it would be if we had a different event here, like a wedding. Weddings really do hit my bottom line. I made money on weddings. On the larger events, it really falls more into the umbrella of economic development. The marketing division, events and logistics, we help a little bit in terms of, sure, I'm good for a Facebook post. Sure, my guy can come down and move a couple parking cones. Very minimal, it's also very little positive or associated with us. Really put it all on them and say, you need security, you need to figure out parking, you need to figure out your permits that you need from the city. This is going to go late, you need to work with OLCC, and it all lands on them. We can be a bit of a guided man, but it's very much hands off. As we get Jordan sort of moved through here, we kept seeing that sort of repeating. And so it kind of comes back to you guys, a discussion of how do we do this better? How does it fit in the mission of both of these entities? And then how does the tourism committee plug into that? And those are sort of questions that we could go a bunch of different directions, but we're not sure where both of these bodies would like us to go. And doing it together, I think we can. So that sort of opens up the floor to discussion. I'll remind everybody that the statistics in here are terrible. I'd also like to point out that a tremendous amount of staff that showed up tonight. We're very much as a culture at the port, taking in what our officials were saying. And that those folks across the street are our partners. And that we're going to be working together more often, and that we're embracing that as a culture and as a direction. So I open up the floor to any direction you guys want to go with us.
Thank you, Denise Emily Baker, City of Cascade Locks. I just want to say, first of all, I apologize if you saw me texting. I was reminding some tourism folks that there were lots of tourism items on the agenda if they wanted to join, since I didn't see this agenda previously. And on that note, thank you, this is great. I'm very proud of our new tourism paid consultant, Janice Crane, who came and gave a report, which is Public Access on Monday. About the things that are going on. And, and I do see that there is, or I'm hearing that there is a hope to integrate. Marketing with the port and the city. We've already connected with Skamania. And they're doing some cross marketing for the holiday season for us. So, and reaching out to our side of tourism to possibly do cross marketing. I am, I'm not sure how many people here are familiar with the Main Street Oregon program. It's a park and rec program. And I just went to a Zoom webinar as the city designated contact for Main Street. Because it is time again to renew the City of Cascade Locks. Designation, or how it is we are involved in Oregon Main Street. We are currently at the lowest level, which allows us little to no access to grants, but we get a lot of information. And on that note, I just want to put out that it is very important. As I talked to my city council in two weeks and. That Main Street said it is a community wide goal, similar to what you're, you just said, Mr. Blue about. That even events that you do, of course, affect the whole community. And we will need seven to thirteen. Various diverse constituents, I am told that ports are usually involved if there is a port, so somebody from the port. Cities can be involved, usually particularly in small towns, businesses, property owners, and then our diverse community. So that is something that I will be bringing after our next council meeting to all of us. And, and I would like to email everyone to goals that were set out. The Oregon Main Street program. Main Street itself in USA has been around since the eighties. So they've actually have a really well validated program, but they have modified and have studies to show that it works. To make thriving communities, increase economic development, increase tourism, all the things that we want. And in fact, TLT funds have been used for. Some of the commitments to Main Street. And I'll share more of that later than anybody wants, but I just want to say how excited I am that this. I feel if you don't know anything about Oregon Main Street, you can Google it, it's on the Oregon Park and Rec page. It is a way to bring all of us together. The Dallas Port is very involved with their Main Street program as well as the city. I might get the Stevenson while it's Washington, similar program, the director of our Oregon program used to be Washington Main Street. And city, if you haven't seen what city Stevenson does for their Main Street program. They're, they've done a lot for Stevenson and I might have invite them to come and do a little presentation on how it brings in community. And it ha, it is not even says, it not even recommends diverse opinions and voices. It says you must have diverse of the voices. And not just the business owners, because everybody in the City of Cascade Locks is a stakeholder in what happens on our Main Street. So anyway, I'm very excited about that and, and can share more later, and I won't take up too much time.
And just while you were mentioning time, so me and Jordan discussed and me and the president are putting the agenda together. We can definitely like to be in the ninety minutes to two hour range. Again, this is your guys' meeting, but if that ninety minutes to two hours go good, I know city council just did a meeting two days ago. My commission has a meeting next week, so we want to be respectful in time, that's sort of our target, so. Did I make it say that earlier?
Yeah, we're all. Well, hey, we have this week, Cascade Locks. And as I'm looking through the different tourism activities, it seems like they kind of fall into two different categories. We've got activities that are really focused more on outside visitors. And then we have other events that are really focused more on community building inside for the citizens here. And I think that both of those offer unique benefits and challenges that I think are worthy of bringing up. But I was going to say, in addition to economic development, the activities are really focused on like PCT days, which is the God's Run. I really see those as opportunities that we can promote and showcase our town. And I think it's the, you know, the economic development, you said it, but I'm sure there are a lot of people that come here. And they fall on the variable town and they bring other people to come back here. And so it might not be a real short term benefit, but I believe there's a real long term benefit to those activities. On the flip side, I think we should probably also talk about, you know, parking and some of the other noise issues and challenges that those events bring up. But I definitely believe that the benefits far outweigh the challenges. And I believe that those challenges are things that we can meet and address. And then I don't, I think it was a post that you made on Facebook, it was not, you know, anything related to port. It was more just a question of why do you love living in Cascade Locks? And I love that post. And there are a couple of reasons that I saw on the baskets that most people spelt into, and one of them was that sense of community. I mean, that was like number one at the very top. And so I definitely see the benefit of those things like the Gorge Renew Club and the Beach Nights that they do. And the other activities they do is community building. And the community picnic is another opportunity where we get together and really connect with each other. So, and then the holiday event is another one that, you know, plenty of people love all the lights at the port and the, and during the big Christmas and holiday season. So I just want to comment on that, and that's all I have to say. That's great. I did want to make a quick comment about Main Street USA program. Fantastic program, City of Kaid Row implemented that, made big differences in their downtown port. City and the port have been talking a lot about making a change is revitalization of the downtown port. Trying to get rid of some of the direct buildings and, and figure out a way to support and help facilitate that process. And work with city on that, whether it's putting in a direct building ordinance to kind of get some, a little bit of teeth and put some pressure on. Some of the owners of those buildings that just let them sit and let them degrade. And a way that the port can come in and help with that. But so we talked about the Main Street program probably fifteen years ago. And our original planner, who was now an institute contractor. He was the one that brought that up and talked about the incremental tax financing that can be used basically. Value of the properties they draw, they draw a line in the sand and say, okay. And then they use the appreciated value as we move forward for this incremental tax financing that helps to get low interest loans and other types of grants. To revitalize some of these properties. So another program that could be used to say get a cascade in, get some new roof on it, you know, try and get businesses into some of those things. Also, as far as tourism goes, you know, tourism, I think if you took over tourism from, we used to be part of the river chain. Twenty years plus year, we took it over because we just didn't see it felt like we were getting fronts off the table from the rivers and marketing. And so we took it over and a lot has changed in the last twenty years with landowners. The tourism committee hasn't, it's always been kind of a city run, they have volunteers and some of those people had, you know. Didn't have businesses, didn't have an understanding. And now we have a whole new revitalized, new businesses downtown that have no skin in the game. And if we can kind of look towards what we're doing towards maybe where we can, whether we turn it into a chamber that utilizes a. You know, like a business association where it's got a skin in the game where they have say so about what happens with the marketing. And create a kind of a cohesive plan for what we're doing on marketing to benefit both the businesses and. The hotels and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think it's time to start looking at how, how we're going to make changes in that and how it will benefit the community.
Interesting note that Jordan just asked me was that to take full advantage of, we've got our original solutions team here. And it's all the supportive partners from both the city and the port. So we had this here, Business Oregon's here, Nate Stice from the governor's office who runs out Dallas here, the runs, runs that things here. Well, Denver. Self-service services. Yes, thank you. But we had an opportunity to have Main Street do a small representation for us. And it's probably something we can get running each one of these bodies as well. But if we need to have a chamber or a business association to really take advantage of the benefits that Main Street has to offer.
Councilor Emily Baker kind of hinted at it, as a city, you can be an affiliate member, which blows up. To really get access to those markets and has to improve a business association or.
We had a, I'm sorry. Well, I was going to say, we had a business association. But unfortunately, because we don't have, there were no one coming into it, no TLTs, nothing. It kind of just became another service organization and it was very hard getting buy-in from the, from the businesses. Cause they quite frankly, didn't see any benefit to them or how, how that really impacted them being part of this business association. Other than, you know, it means they're going to volunteer their time for things like the Santa Social and that sort of thing. They didn't mind doing, but they just didn't see, how does this benefit my business? And actually had some of them actually say, well, you know, this is great and I don't mind paying dues, but how is this going to benefit my business? And I think without the input of TLTs and where they can see that they've got skin in the game, they can be. Part of that decision, they can process and how do we do our marketing? What things are we doing that are going to influence their, to their benefit? So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that the City of Big River, their chamber commerce falls on this year's. Yeah, and I, I don't know that much about it, but I know that they do use some TLT funds to support the chamber. And the intention behind the chamber is to, for economic development. And it really ties directly into the kind of the mission of the tourism as well. So they do kind of go hand in hand. And I don't know why they're separate, you know, I think that, you know, that's something that could.
A, a good portion of small cities in Oregon give their TLT straight to their local chamber commerce. And that way it's off their books, they've given it, they've done their purpose for the tourism, this is along in the chamber, if their books opened to inspect. It's good to go. And then the role of the chamber is really twofold, it's tourism, like we're talking about, and business advocacy. Those are the kind of two main roles.
And attending the LOC meeting, a conference down in UG, several, several small towns, cities. And all said, you know, if you don't have a chamber, you gotta get one. And the chamber will really, because then you've got one person who is in charge of it, you usually have an assistant. But as Mr. Bennett said, that they're the ones pushing economic development support of all the businesses. That you've got one person, that's their job. So a great example, you know, Stevenson, they, they're, they're constantly doing programs. They've, they've got all sorts of stuff. I'm not sure how Main Street works with the chamber over there, D N H C would probably know. But I, I really think Cascade Locks would benefit to have a chamber.
I, I would point this on the city side, that could also make the tourism committee kind of redundant or not needed. So the city back.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe. Thank you, Jeremiah and Jordan for picking this together. Yeah, I definitely feel like now is a good time for the communities to start a business association or a chamber. It's just, I think Main Street is kind of an informational stepping stone. Or kind of like a lean Oregon cities type informational thing of telling you where the opportunities out there, they're not going to do it for you, they'll give you a template. But actually forming it and learning how that works. I know from my experience with the nonprofits, five one C three for a business association, you got to get five one C six. Get a minimum of three officers in the state of Oregon. Or army even first appointed and they're elected every couple of years. So I think it would help do a workshop on how those things work. Reach out to Union County's Chamber of Commerce, they have a really good program there. And I'm sure they've worked with the city on how Main Street works, so.
Hi, I have been the, we are a connected community. And the next step up in the four steps of Main Street is to be an affiliated. And if we are affiliated, then we can apply for grants, we can get technical assistance. It is, it is not just informational, it is the organization. And in fact, to apply, we need to show within three years how we're going to afford a part-time. Main Street staff member, and they even give you guidelines on what they might be paid. And often it, I mean, it could be a joint position with the city staff, port staff, separate tourism committee. But Main Street is not a chamber, neither is it a business association. It is the entire community. I, and in many communities where there are the Main Street organizations such as Stevenson. There are also small business associations, and businesses have different goals as well as the entire community. And then, and then because transient lodging tax is a tax. To which a city is fiduciarily responsible to oversee, even if we would give it to an organization such as we have given advice. To tourism is one branch of what the city's tourism committee does. It, 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 it's more than just supporting small business, it's more than just supporting events. There are so many pieces to it. And so with whatever way we recommend going, Main Street is a separate organization from tourism. And they could ask the tourism committee for TLT funds. Whereas a small business association could also ask. Tourism and the city for TLT funds or other grant. Each of these carry the responsibility for grant writing and port is talking about that. We're talking about that I brought up Monday night that I get overwhelmed at the lack of money the city has. And all the money I hear is out there. And how are we going to find a grant writer, write the grants, take the time to research what is it we really need? And our city is going through our own strategic plan coming up in a work session. So that's exciting because it is based on work that was done to include as much of the community as we can. Cause it's not about what we want, it's about what is good for this community, what the community asks for. So, so each decision we make. And council member Happy reminded us that one of our speakers at LOC, it's not for the next election, it's for the next generation. And that's what our plan is about, we know you're, you're getting yours. And I do not see how we can not do these things together. And if that means some staff time for a person that is a part of both. On Main Street is my understanding that that committee might include planning person, might include a tourism person, might include, like I said before, port city, business owners. Land, property owners, communities of all ages. So that is for thriving and vibrant community, not just businesses, but parks. And, and, and yes, there is grant money, you can immediately get access to at Main Street technical support. And then if you could move up, we aren't ready for designating status. But the people, the cities that are designated status immediately get three thousand dollars to, to do something, I guess, rethink. And the Main Street folks will come, walk through your city, take an, an inventory of what are your assets, what are your. Challenges. And then they check in with you. And again, I trust their length of time in existence for the advice that they give. So that to me, while it's a separate entity, it includes a piece. We are a small community that has maybe reduced the number of volunteers into growing community. I know Seaside is much bigger than ours, and yet the mayor of Seaside said he has seventeen committees. Main Street is not meant to be a city committee, neither port committee, it is a nonprofit entity on its own. But it can include those people, that's what I'm saying. There are folks in this town who have fight for a small business association, possibly a chamber. I think it's no mystery, some business owners and, and so I would not propose to suggest to the business owners. What is best for them, chamber or small business association? I have been a member of a small business association in Milwaukee Park, and I, I have a consulting business. And there was a separate tourism, culture, arts committee. And, and while they were separate, they sometimes interlapped. So I would, I know the folks that applied have spoken to our strategic planning person. And I could speak with them to see if I can share it with other business owners or if they're reaching out. And I'm not sure if they have applied for a nonprofit status for chamber or a small business.
I think they're focused on the business association. I think it would be more sense in our opinion to have a chamber of ours personally. Because then you can also include the annual events that bring people together, like fireworks, interest insights, holiday stuff. I'm looking at this list and it's essentially a list that brings a lot of tourists to town. And the city sees a lot of local transient tax and hotels. And, you know, it's approaching times when you have parking issues in town, but it's one of the people to deal with this. Being locked into urban and factories out, but looking at all this, seems like the chamber of commerce to be a better approach. It's not just solely focused on businesses. It's a neutral entity compared to the city in the port where they can focus on their values, you know. The chamber can focus on events that help the community in general, yeah, right, still for it, so. Yeah, so I was wondering about this list. What does the city? What is the city looking for in terms of more core cooperation with, I think as you start down this list of different events?
Might get to say something for Robert. Councilmember Compton, joining via Zulu, that's nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But the city's looking for is support? Yeah, we need to have a conversation where we start, like what is the port looking for, what is the city looking for? I mean, a lot of ways these conversations go, we talked about pretty much down the road, but this is a whole annual list. And are there anything that the city wants to prioritize about talking? I'm going to say that again, I'm sorry. Is there anything on this list the city wants to prioritize in talking about tonight? Like in terms of the events that we have.
Staff wise, no.
Which one?
Staff wise, no. I mean, as staff, to be honest, we want really nothing to do with any of this. That's, you know, we would push out a chamber, we have the chamber put them on, you know, we provide the power, the water and all that. And actually marking them staff and we want nothing to do, I mean, our dogs to make sure the roads are in the potholes. You guys get waters, toilet, you have power, that's my job.
So. I guess whether it's a business association or whether it's a chamber, it's kind of a little bit of semantics. Because most chambers are made up of all the businesses. They're all businesses are essentially painted into the chamber, so a little bit of semantics. But that's kind of the bottom, it will be a, essentially it will be a chamber. Only reason partly I was mentioning possibly a business association, because I believe we still may have. A five one C three for an existing business association in Cascade Locks. I don't know if they let that five one C three status lapse or anything needs to be done. But as I said, it was kind of a. We tried to revitalize the business association several years back, but because. We tried to revitalize the business association several years back, but because there was a total lack of. Involvement for the most part, because we just saw a benefit to it, it just became another service organization and really didn't. Do anything and because they had the money, uh so uh I think it's very viable, we can have a chamber or a business association and. Uh go ahead.
I was gonna say that we should probably take that as an action item to do a pros and cons list. Uh Main Street program versus Chamber of Commerce or. You know, so we can all know a little bit more and educate ourselves for it, so.
I think we have to, I think it would be no problem, probably not to, maybe together, a bunch of teams to do these meetings regularly. But I know that individually, they would be more than welcome to come and present to either one of us.
And I would say part of that should be uh kind of like counting of, you know, because of the uh P O P taxes. Uh percentage of those directly into the general fund because, you know, like cities like put it down on the coast and that's right and. They put almost zero money actually into marketing because they don't need it, what they need is. They put almost a hundred percent of theirs into the general fund because the size of their city triples. Uh because of tourism, they have more city services needed, more trash can identity, more lawn mowing, picking up trash, everything's like that, so. Uh I believe about seventy percent of the P L T taxes go directly into our general fund and then thirty percent actually go in tourism. Now, post, uh I can't remember the date, I think it's two thousand and four, they passed a rule that then any new T L T taxes. So we increased the P O P tax by seven percent, I don't know what currently is, eight percent. Then any new increase after that date that the state set, a hundred percent of that uh revenue. Had to go directly into tourism market, so we may want to do an inventory on first of all how much money is coming in and. Uh where do we stand as far as our uh P O P tax rate versus. Other outline, other communities in our region, because if, if we're, you know, a couple of our percentage. Below because we haven't made any adjustments to it, it might be worth looking at that because that would then directly go into uh into market. And into uh Chamber, that sort of thing, so and uh and then the same percentage then continuing to uh.
To echo uh Denise, I think that us. Working directly with Main Street to get us stepping stones on what the correct path is for a city of our size to go. I have a very, very strong sense that they will be very excited when they get here and they see an entity like the Port. Who's full mission is economic development and they say, why is the port not funding some of this? And our answer will be, we would love to, it is a great fit for us to have an organization that tackles things like this. And makes them bigger, better, stronger, more important to the community, more vibrant, more inclusive, more uh uh better marketed. Than it is for the staff I have behind me to try to pull that off amongst the other things that are, are already in our work. So I think if we were to get involved with uh uh Main Street. That they would sit down and say, well shoot, you already have an engine at your guys' disposal, we can probably move you through this faster than a smaller community. Very, very few communities understand how impressive it is that we have here. Cities all across Oregon, across the nation are struggling to provide services to their citizens and along with the counties, they're struggling. And then we have this entity that the county tries to do and the city's trying to do and sometimes they do it well and that's our entire mission. Is economic development, so for us to see a line that the city has said is important to them, that the commission has said is important to them, again, we'll. Put a strategic business plan to put a line in on that, but generally the feeling will be there. We will be able to very easily direct funds in that sort of direction because we can do it back there. We do good at directing funds, creating a foundation for economic development, we don't do as well at creating it ourselves. Uh we don't do as well at operating businesses ourselves, right, we can place some foundation and say, look, this is a perfect place for economic development to occur. So if there is an association that sees that, and they will, and I know a hundred percent that downtown management is gonna be like, oh, why? Why is it like this? Yes, you guys have the money, you have the city and now you just need to bundle it this way and. We will have an entire association of downtown businesses, we will have an entire association of all of these event planners, every single one of them will belong to the Chamber, right? Um you will get other businesses announcing, we are a chamber that is effective, that we're a chamber that moves and shakes. Getting people from across the river that want to now be part of this chamber, um right now I go to Chamber events and mostly what it for me is networking and trying to. This skill business is like, get, come down to our area, that really what is sort of the value for us because we don't have one ourselves. Um I think it's, I think Denise has gone a really good step by engaging them and letting them lead us on this path, but. Alright, so we have this engine, we have this need, we have these folks, then what do we need to do? And I think they can get us there.
I would say so, is the next step having them come in and speak about?
I think the next step in most of this stuff is going to be for me and Jordan to take away from this interview. Take away from this meeting and come back and ask our individual bodies, is this the next step that we want to take based on what we just had? Alright, as much as I, I'd love the discussion that can happen here, there's not a whole lot of, there's not a lot, a whole lot of motion and second, I said things that can be. We still act as opposite entities, but, but just hearing what I heard, yes, that would be my next step is to invite.
So I, I think um to have a Main Street, to still have a business association, then I do want to be found in a chamber. Where there is a paid director of the Chamber, you've got one person where every event. Whether it's Port, City, nonprofits, everything is going to one director, hopefully they can have an assistant. But they, Chambers, I've just seen so many positive things happen when you have someone, right now. Um there's all these different ideas, but there's so many chiefs and there's, and everyone is busy. Uh business owners, family, everyone's busy, but if you have a paid person director of a Chamber, that their sole responsibility is. Business development, um you know, working with Main Street or all the different organizations, I think it's really a big.
So I'm caring maybe more than, not, it's not one together, it can be.
Right, if you have a chamber, the chamber, everything they're on, it's got the chamber, then a business association, you know, they can look without and, and Main Street as well.
Thank you. I, I just want to point out, we are part of the Oregon Main Street Association. As of last January, we joined at the connected community level. I am in deep contact for Main Street, I have shared emails. It is time, we have only until January to apply to move to the affiliated level. Or we're still at the connected communities level and we cannot apply for grants, we cannot get technical system. And so it is, Main Street can exist. With Chambers all different town and business associations and personally. I, I don't feel it's this body's place to make a business association or a chamber, that it could be. The businesses in town and organizations, we can be a part. Of a Main Street organization and I'm hoping that at least one person from the Port will say, yes, I want to get part of that, one person from the city, yes. One person from the businesses, yes, I'll reach out to property owners, yes. We need at least seven folks who say we want this. In order to complete our application in January, which I'm willing to commit to as this council had. Um appointed me the representative to Main Street. There are ten emails a week term, I don't know how many, there's a lot, that share, the person excited, here's what we did, here's. And I, and I tried to get them out to the people that are interested, we had somebody. From tourism go to the Main Street conference because tourism should play a role in Main Street. And they said, this is great, we need businesses involved, we need government involved, so I'm just saying, we are here. We already belong, I was going to bring it to city council because I just went to this Zoom meeting yesterday. To learn the deadline in January, to say, I'm hoping to move us to the next level, not Denise. But I'm hoping this community, because in the end, it's a nonprofit, it's not a city organization, that includes. Businesses, organizations, churches, people, community, and there still can be a chamber and a small business association and we hope. I will share what I hear tonight with the folks that I, that I've heard are applying for a nonprofit. S B A or Chamber status, I'll remind them that there might be to look into the old as well, nothing is, is separate. But I do not want to miss this next jump up, there is ten million dollars, starting to affirm that, ten million dollars. In the state of Oregon to be given out as grants in twenty twenty five to those who are affiliated and designated members in twenty twenty four. We cannot miss that.
As far as we're applying, the port needs to apply separately themselves from what the city is doing, you're representing the city or you're representing the?
I'm representing nobody, I'm going to see who in the community, I thought. If, it has to be a nonprofit group of people, it is, it is a, it will become its own thing. It can be Main Street, Cascade Locks, it can be Creative Cascade Locks.
How the port gets involved with.
The port can be.
Tourism, like how the port can involve a major.
Be one of the seven that is required, they like nine to thirteen, there's going to be a board, you don't have to be perfectly in place at the affiliated level. You have to say how you're gonna do it, but you have to have at least seven people who say, I plan to be. On a Main Street committee meeting for the next three years, hoping to get us off the ground. And hopefully at least one person from the port, at least one person from the city, at least um one person from tourism. I, I think the planning might be a good, but maybe nobody on planning wants to come, but. So, so it is, it's odd to talk about it as a city and a port because it's not really our thing. But my word, if you have had any experience with Main Street, it will help us and then. That connection from the port can say, oh yeah, and, and they give us guidance, technical assistance, they redo buildings. You're gonna apply to redo building, you're gonna apply for new buildings, she just said yesterday, out of that ten million dollars, we could. Apply to have affordable houses above retail, to build that, that is what some of their goal setting. So it seems a great connector and it's out of the state of Oregon Park and Red. They're not getting less funds, they're getting more, um and it doesn't have to disrupt anybody else's goals. It just uh needs to have strong support from a diverse group, yes.
Um so I know you said you would share some of the information with, with the group here, but it sounds like what you're saying is. Really we need seven people from the community that would be able to join in this and then what would the commitment be?
Um up to three years, uh well, that group will decide how often are we meeting, you know, how. So uh I need to look at the application, I tried to email you the notes I took, um but apparently I did it wrong. So I will email this council on board the notes and um. It's an interesting position that I'm in as a council member, having been appointed to be the connected communities. Level because that, the city level and I think that, that it is important in this community to take it out of the city. They like that, they want that to be a nonprofit, there are a few cities that they keep the Main Street program within the city like Estupeda. But they don't prefer that and I think there would be less. I think it's better for our community if it is the nonprofit that Main Street suggests, so. Do I need permission from the city council at the next meeting to go ahead and. Um advertise for folks because it is a nonprofit organization, do I just? Ask folks and say, hey, you wanna help? And that's why I thought we could get, it's the holidays. You know, nobody's gonna come in time for us to get the January application, yes.
So maybe I'm not following here, but does this group of seven, whoever it is, do they have to be a registered nonprofit in the state before this January?
No, no, to be an affiliated member, we have to have a plan. Well, they like nine to thirteen, but they will start with seven.
I just wanted to, because I think, I feel like a little, some people are a little confused on this Main Street Association thing, um. When we started it, it starts with the city saying that we're interested and then it's kind of this, like. Our goal to basically get a association or a, or a group started. Or then, and then from there, it kind of becomes their thing, it's, it leaves the city's purview.
Pretty much, Sean, thank you for asking, it, we, we couldn't ju- because I learned about it in January, the LOC session. And you had to join in January at some level, we didn't have. Eight people who said, hey, I heard of Main Street, let's start Main Street, so we joined, Jordan and, and we all agreed, so that is how the city. Became a connected communities tier member and I learned yesterday in the Zoom, they, they wanted. Really out of the city, they convert to nonprofit organization because they believe it will. Welcome a more diverse group, have more diverse opinions and not be bound by city, um. Voting and, and things like that and, and they guide you through the process and they, um. I think for most of us, if we've been to Stevenson, most of the things you see, the benches, the wayfinding signs, that. You'll see uh Main Street Stevenson, um and so that might be a good guide that I might be able to get Kelly from Main Street. Here for a quick presentation, say, anybody interested in, in joining this uh nonprofit and. And then, um so yes, in the end, it, it is recommended. Um and ninety percent of Oregon Main Streets are not just a city organization. But yes, we had to start last year because that was our only way in, was we had January, it's time to do it, so we did. And now January's coming up again, time to move up and I, I'm quite excited about ten million dollars.
Said there's another city like Mosher is involved with getting a Main Street, have you talked to any of the counselors or government over there?
Um I've spoken to Main Street folks throughout this year and various learning, there's a lot. They also have a lot of learning sessions, like sometimes for businesses that you wanna, so once there's a Main Street, the people in that Main Street, the leader of that. Organization will say, hey, this goes to businesses, this goes here.
Kind of trying to get a roadmap of what the first one or two years looked like for the Main Street affiliate.
Um helping, they are starting to look at the port and city goals and priorities. To see where they need, they're taking, um it's very important to take, they like to take inventory. What you have, what your plans and your community say you need, uh and then. Uh working with the Main Street staff on how can we get there, uh and so. I, I've got seven pages of notes that I will email you, I apologize, and um. And if you Google, you can Google Oregon State Park and like Main Street and see a lot, so I don't necessarily, first, personally. I haven't experienced the first three years, but she said it is, um that we are. Working toward long-term goals, it's about a thriving community, so the goal of Main Street is all about, um. Oh, I've lost my pages, you know, um.
So I think what we will definitely, at least I'd be, be going to take away from this meeting, I would definitely take from my commission. An opportunity to have Main Street come and present, but I think presenting, presenting to us gives us next steps, whether we choose to take them, obviously that's up to this commission. But I certainly taking, taking that away from this meeting, I, I don't know if you as well, I assume if they're here, we can try to present to you at all or as individual bodies. But I certainly feel like engaging in this next step and the, some of the other conversations we were having, I'm running the business association or a chamber, or how do we get there?
So that, I, I think we're talking about these different subjects, I think the Main Street, that's, that's a whole separate thing. Chamber, business association, association can be a part of the Chamber, um the, from what I understand, it, it is part of the city and the port. Where you're like, hey, we want a chamber, how does that happen? Okay, how would you recommend it? Plus bonds. So that I think is the, that, that's, that's one of the biggest elements, it's like.
I mean, that's certainly something we need to take back to, to the commission to talk about, that would be as part of our strategic business plan. I mean, that's certainly something we need to take back to the commission to talk about, that would be as part of our strategic business plan. But that certainly involves into under economic development in a way that I clearly wrap my brain around as executive director. Uh, I am pushing this to an entity that does all of that coordination, all of that work, making sure each, each uh uh member of the body of the chamber is represented, right? Um, it's still for the port, it seems like a very natural flex. I mean, I do push a lot of, I push funds to three separate chambers, and we do feel like we can get out of them, but it certainly would be a larger chunk of funds that we could push locally to our receiver. Again, uh, we, we're gonna come down, let's bring our budget metrics to your business plan together. But for us to fund as much as applicable acquisition and for it to be funded by LTL, it also be funded by LTL, that starts to create a very effective and powerful chamber very quickly, something that would normally take a long time to build up to.
And then you can match that with something like a Main Street.
Yes, and then Main Street can come along and say, look at this little powerhouse you guys done, look at all the things you can also be doing, like that could be helpful. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I just have a question, and I hope it's not like a big elephant in my room, but I would. What um, do you, has a city put plans of what to do with the buildings that are not being used downtown? Is that something?
It's right here.
Oh. Has a um, do you have a plan for that yet, or is that more relating for?
We have a lot of ideas here. Um, what I believe might be workable ideas, you know, we're still, as we are both going through our strategic business plan, I'm certainly, I'm certainly what that out more at than going through our strategic business plan. I know that as a port, we're committed to not let the top of the buildings in the downtown sit vacant. We're gonna find a strategy, uh, possibly it may um be utilizing a direct building ordinance to put pressure on some of the people who have vacant buildings in town. Hopefully then the port can use that as leverage to talk with them about what can we do? Can we, how can we help you, can you grow people into your building? Um, in some cases, that might incentivize them to sell the building and see if that's uh the way that you know, we've kind of made a commitment that we're not gonna let buildings in the downtown sit vacant. And if at all possible, the port will pick them up, invest into them, find clients for them. Um, and because I think a key to revitalizing uh Cascade Locks in general and finding new businesses in here is getting those empty buildings downtown for, you've got paper on your windows, shingles falling off, it's return to remove, well, police tape across the railings. You know, we need to put some minimum criteria upon uh what constitutes being a building owner in the town, even if the building isn't occupied. We have a minimum standards that we're gonna, we're gonna now hold into. And that may involve uh the port hoping to fund a ordinance enforcement officer, because as many ordinances you have, it doesn't matter if they're not enforced. So uh, first of all, putting new ordinances to give some of these things teeth, and then somebody actually with the teeth become usable. So uh, you know, in in general, even before we set up plans, like I would say that is where we're at.
For, yeah, first and foremost, I would think before.
And the mutual.
Which that is, meaning that it's.
Yeah, I would just want to say that, you know, chambers or commerce do not use government money, money for funding. Uh, government entities are members of chambers and commerce, uh, commerce. But the uh, the chamber itself is a five oh one C six. The, the businesses, you know, business owners, to start the change, it's not up to government.
Uh, to add, the government's role in that is to allocate the transient uh blocking tax towards that area. And that is basically, uh, you know, the city has to do that because the, all the TMT taxes flow through the city and then are dispersed out to whatever organization, whether it's a five oh one C three or whether it's a chamber with a five oh one C six, I said, they're all. Pete, can you run, and then Rob, or something maybe?
I was just gonna comment on the daily buildings and business development and investment. And you know, I've talked with several people about this topic, and part of what's gonna make this an attractive place for people to wanna invest in is population. And so that's, and also, you know, housing is directly correlated with, you know, businesses. How do we guys complete housing, where are we gonna live? Um, it's been a challenge with Black Six, it's lack of childcare, lack of housing. It's a common denominator that really is a problem that needs to be addressed. Um, and I feel like the pretty bipolarism we have going right now is uh giving significantly increase our population, the more people that are living here, the larger our population, the more people are gonna see this, it's not for community, it's not for economic investment. So I do think that these things are really correlating. I'm gonna take it quick off then before Rob goes, just to let us know, we're coming up on our first hour. I'm also gonna take this opportunity to release my staff, who's been here all day, and thank you for coming and showing their support for this vision we have, working together with those who came, you might belong to the channel, and thank you for coming, those who are entertaining.
Thank you, Eric. You have to say. Oh, wow.
Yeah, uh, I think the key point I wanted to kind of address tonight is the whole revitalization of downtown corridor. Uh, you should take a drive, I've seen this for the last couple of years, you know, there's eight or nine vacant lots of buildings that are sitting there. And it's frustrating, uh, I feel somewhat paralyzed from the port perspective because we can't, we don't have any influence really too much on the zoning and the rules about when your building decay on the street. And also our code in in the city is very outdated, and it doesn't have any penalties for letting your building go to crap it in the downtown zone. So I kinda wanna see where the city's at right now, looking into updating your zoning codes, or maybe developing codes and all that.
I, I can speak to Jordan, you can correct me or jump in. Um, we have applied for a grant to work on some of our codes, is that right? And um, we are working on one code right now with a planner change. I spoke with the Hoodruck County Commissioner recently on about this issue, he said you cannot find people for not being open, but they wrote a dark store code, I believe that's right. Uh, saying that it must look like it's open, maintains windows. Uh, and they can then find, do code complaints if it's not, and that helped inspire some folks to to sell because it costs a lot to maintain it as though it's not, that that lights, they have to have the dark store code, so I will follow up with that county commissioner, because he said it's illegal to find them for not being open, but you can write a dark store code. Now, I'm under the Main Street umbrella, which I want to say, I think, I think it meets the need of what I'm hearing you want a chamber to do. And because we have openings on our tourism committee, our planning committee, I would hate to see that involve people diluted that might be on the Main Street, and I'm hoping that this body would support um, support attempting to do that for the next three years, as we would put in our application, number one, and number two, that includes talking to business owners. I know the port has been pretty good about some of that, building owners. Um, I don't know anybody like having the meeting where we say, hey, I have personally talked to at least one building owner uh that's trying to come up with better plans, but that's just a different, I can't, I, you know, not. So I think it's that relationship building that certain folks can take on and maybe can be more um guided and pointed if, through a Main Street committee, yes.
To answer uh, here's his question, Jordan, can you speak to about the grant that we applied for? And we're supposed to hear December first?
Yeah, that's what they told me, the deadline. So we applied for a grant through Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. Um, help us build a downtown revitalization plan. Um, the main purpose of it is to rewrite our codes, to make them more business friendly. Second part of it is to find a parking strategy, to get off-screen parking, for public parking. Uh, the third part is wayfinding signage, figuring out how we can successfully incorporate both the bike and hiking trail slowing down. Um, I was told at that regional solutions meeting, we were the only city in the north central region that submitted an application, so.
Save your tongue maybe, there's a pretty good chance we're gonna get.
Just to first my ideas about a parking change, uh, exactly where my, my probably market. I know it's private property, but it's also on a hill, you can build it two stories, it wouldn't block the homes on that hill. That would be wonderful, so I would look into maybe even the railing yard that goes into the entrance. Uh, I don't know if Union Pacific would ever give that, and up there, or up there, it's a little bit off the beaten path.
Is that entire parking lot property of?
Like the first drive, right before you go to read the railroad, they got big Union Yard, uh, railroad yard. It's always been kind of in the talks for the last couple of years, but I think it's still railroad property, so.
Yeah, but yeah, that parking lot in front of the market, or front of the market belongs to the market, one in front of the cascade, it belongs to the cascade, who monitors it?
And and see, I'm really sorry.
Uh, it's pretty exciting, I think, so the port has talked about very much some of the big events is putting some of that parting over on east side of port property and having some kind of shuttle go back and forth to, just to alleviate some of the traffic issues in town.
Yeah. And to uh Rob's, uh, just going to where you talked about, and the parking garage in that particular area, right? Really haven't compared that out of nowhere, but those are really the types of projects that a port is suited well to help fund and to get funding for. Those are the kind of projects that a port is sort of laying the groundwork for economic development to to occur, right? Um, that's the kind of, that's the kind of project that a port can seep into and really makes some things happen where it's a little stronger. Those are the places where a port all of a sudden becomes a very beneficial partner to have. Um, and falls underneath their umbrella, uh, which is why some of this is getting away from event type things and handing that to me, it's do, it's better, it allows us to tackle projects that's big, that's that size and that scale. Um, because then I can, I can staff for that, I can structure uh uh our group and our focus around that's what we do as an entity. Um, the, the other piece that the commission's gonna talk about a little bit later is, and I think we've seen this as our tours, the calamity, those who went on that, uh, is not letting our property get away from us. Um, I think that this commission is gonna take a strong look at how do we maintain control of the property in downtown so it doesn't land in the hands of speculators? So that when a business comes and spends twenty or thirty years here being a great business, and they sell, and someone comes in and buys it, right? If, we, we don't have to make any kind of money off of this, it'd be the landlord of downtown who controls all the funds. It's keeping that property in the hands of an entity whose entire job is to make sure something else pops up that is good for the community and keeps downtown revitalized. So that's something that I know the commission is going to look at in our strategic business plan, is how do we take bigger stake in what is happening in downtown corridor? Not for the next five or ten years, but for the fifty and sixty years that these properties and buildings sort of flip, that they don't just sit and sit and sit waiting for someone to come and cash them out.
And on the city side, etc.
Wait, I'm sorry.
On the city side, to make sure that is as easy as possible for them to do, update our codes, work with them to to not get in the way, again, yes, follow the code, follow the laws, but make it as easy as possible.
So I'll kind of segue that into, uh, I'm gonna go out, I'll leave here, as I said, we're still in the process of just beginning uh redoing our strategic business plan, but I believe some of the maintenance of that is, first of all, for lack of a better word, our campaign promises for each of us, who's kind of, we're gonna start with the big picture, we're gonna look at, uh, you know, what do we want to start quality and life for the community as far as uh um, and then let that uh be the starting point for the types of businesses we cultivate in our community. Uh, we'll start with a big plan and the big moving pieces, as Robert said, planning. And I believe that is one of the big missing pieces. I mean, this is not the first time we've had strategic business plan, we put up bulletin boards on the walls, generally put up stickers of what the community wanted, that never happened, and I think a large part of that is through the big moving pieces, which is, how do we make that with planning? Let's look at, as uh, um, Pete mentioned, house, house is a big thing. You've got thirty acres of decomposing residential property, we've got uh um, several acres on the east side of town that's uh high density residential, uh, also uh resort commercial, we've got industrial properties. We need to look at how we can use each of those, if we have to do some subtle changes, but that's gonna start with, gonna start with planning. Where we see the needs are and how do we make that happen? Um, we need to do uh community development code updates, we need to change overlays homes, we need to put in additional ordinances to give to revitalize the downtown quarter, downtown quarter, I'd say, uh, you know, it's kind of three different components. We're looking at revitalization of the downtown core, we're looking at the development of uh affordable, affordable housing so that the people who live here in the community that are, uh, you know, working for restaurants, can afford to live here, and there is actually not just affordable housing, but housing that's big. We have, we don't have any of those things, we need to start looking at the missing mill, um, that smaller properties possibly uh um, you know, some different types of models, uh, and I think a lot of that will start with planning. And so I kind of propose that the port and the city uh work together with the planner and the planner will be kind of connecting thread between the port and city, and each of our responsibilities, we're aware of it and how to get there. So, as I said, going out, I'll leave there because we haven't done strategic business plan, but I believe that would be a lot harder.
Thank you. And hopefully city council, we already did um approve, shouldn't have for this one code that we're looking at um adapting, and of course it takes time. Uh, and I, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, because we did have Jeremiah Blue in council for a little while. Is it possible that a port commissioner could be on our planning committee? If that person had time to have one voice um, to speak and get, and also then if we get our Main Street going, that can be a part of it. And I know that the council, again, we're looking at our strategic plan and next steps, which says a lot of these things. Um, so I love that we're working together. Does anybody feel like it would be nice to have maybe some document where you're working on things and then we quickly, it says, what do we need from the city, what do we, what do we wanna hear from the city, or uh, could they provide us with, and then we quickly have that that we send to you?
I think a spreadsheet where you could, just between the city and the port, where we could just, we have a question, can we add it? I mean, you know, whoever's involved with the city can look at, and vice versa, kind of a little chain link forum thread or something, but uh, it's a lot more efficient than finding the time to set up a meeting, financially, it's really quickly in a public format, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think it's gonna be really helpful, we're working on our strategic plan, we're trying to come over the day with the final meeting and finalizer. We've worked really hard on it all year, um, we've got all the pieces, we just have to fine tune a couple of things. So I think once we get that, it's gonna help the port. Um, when, when are you guys doing yours, or?
So we just, we just restarted uh backup with Moss Adams. Uh, so they're, they're gonna start reaching out to our staff, all of our commissioners, uh, some stakeholders, I will probably even have them reach out to uh, uh, our consultants that we use, I'm very much, I, I rely on a lot of consultants that are based from my employees at this point, because they've been with the organization for so long. Um, and those would be the initial sort of uh information that they gather. I think for us, since we already got pretty far into our strategic business plans, we've done a lot of that information gathering. Uh, but reaching back out to the new people again is just sort of the next step. I'm pushing to hopefully, which I'm just now telling my commission this, uh, try to put a workshop together in January, uh, resemble, okay, good. Uh, it'll resemble, you know what happens in Egg Orange, it might be somewhere else, but it'll be sort of a multi-day uh event that that we tackle. Um, and then from there, it sort of depends how much we're all on the same page, how long that takes, what that does to my budget. That really will inform the budget that we're going into, I mean, this, just this meeting can inform my strategic business plan in a greater way. Uh, it's also gonna inform my budget, and so uh before I have a strategic business plan and a budget that's informed by it and that's ready to roll, we're looking at the next fiscal year. Not the plans in place, the money's been put in place, and we've done what we can for this year to try and meet some of those goals, or to establish those goals. But it would be into that next fiscal year before we start seeing actions taken.
I think we're gonna really try to get that done so it can be a part of your.
We certainly had for Moss Adams to get it done.
Jordan, do you agree with that, it's final thing, or what you're, what we're thinking of? We'll have a meeting and when can we?
Uh, since I, I would hope to come out of that meeting with pretty much a final plan and presenting officially pass it in that council meeting.
Okay.
Which, given the date, since most popular will be the first meeting in January. We're not gonna meet up this.
Okay.
Uh, let's say, uh, regarding the downtown revitalization, I think that's a very important topic, it's gonna be happening, involving for the next two years. Uh, obviously, I'm. Uh, obviously on the east end of town, there's a big new subdivision going in. It's going to be forty-five new homes going in there. And uh, about a year, you'll have more people making opinions about the downtown. Uh, the lack of services we have. And then two years from then, they'll be eligible to get involved in politics and they'll get more involved. So you're going to hear more of this. So I think that should be the key focus is how do we improve our downtown sector?
There will be times for us to come together, I think, to have some discussions about how we can be helpful for different projects that the board has. And that's, that's what this project, that's what the board is really going to be focused on, the strategic business plan. Our attainable projects for the next two to five years, ones that we can really tackle. And then we can put our, all our energy to the course, all our staff kind of towards and really focus on one of those. Like again, about the strategic business plan, we're leaning into things here a little bit. They could, or we, you guys, commission could absolutely change this, but uh, we're of course having to start to be a place where uh, that's a conversation the commission is having. That's a place where there's going to be some overlap with the city. Um, so the opportunity for us to come together and to say in the next two to five years where you have new people moving into the area that are now putting more stress on the downtown area and looking for more services. We've got to have people in town who can afford them and don't and have those service level jobs and have a place to live here. Otherwise, we're going to continue to uh, have to pull from Portland and see our business move close every three days a week. We've got to start to create some workforce housing. It used to be, let's create workforce housing so we can bring a big company to town. I don't know that that is the mission of this port anymore. I think it is revitalizing downtown and finding best use after that industrial, after the property. That will be very, we will need the help of the city to help further that.
If we're going to, I mean, instead of thinking of it affordable housing for manufacturing or whatever, um, it can be more of a destination type uh, affordable housing. So anyone that works in the restaurant business or anything that's seasonal, you know, things that we want to build this.
A number of different ways to sort of run that. One that has been discussed here a little bit is also the port utilizing workforce housing as well as the city utilizing workforce housing. Uh, you guys have a really difficult time finding yourself alignment. If all of a sudden I can live in the most beautiful place in the world, be a lineman and now I have a house that's affordable, so I get it for a couple of hundreds. Now there's also ways that some of those jobs that this community changes and evolves that you're going to need and not continually flip through it, plus the previous springboard, right? Especially ours, it's not community, we're using springboards for those jobs. I mean, there's a bigger to these. But if you can bring people out here, a police chief, a fire department, a lineman, uh, I'm not building a house, man. Uh, a city administrator, a general manager, those types of ready, this would be future add. We're not trying to build anybody a house here. But what you don't want to see is these, these continuing leadership pieces in town that are so vital to this community staying effective and not having continually rebuilding that. Having houses for those folks will keep you here. Your police chief will stay here, your lineman will stay here. And they'll take wages better less because we're in a beautiful area. Because we're a small community and because they have a place to live. They will come for the same reasons that, that everyone else has come to this area. We need to find a way to utilize some of that housing, which I've always looked at as a service area, because that's what we're kind of focused on. But it would also be beneficial for the city as well. So that is something that we'll find probably in a strategic business plan that will lay over a lot of need for us to for the city to understand what our mission is and that, having them help us best achieve it.
Regarding the uh.
And then what? And then what?
Go ahead. I was just going to comment on the, you know, these forty-five new homes coming in here now. Uh, it's really important, I think, that we keep those as homes. And I just did a search and see Airbnb's in Caskey Lots and one of the homes right up the street from me that was just built is it's, it's an investment property. It's not owner occupied. It's a, it's a hotel. And I think that that's, you know, not to get too specific about codes. But that's something that I think is, we need to revisit and look at. Um, I know the city of the river just rewrote their short term rental code uh, and made it requirement that it's got to be owner occupied. And so uh, they have some people that have some licenses for operating short term rentals. And when those expire, they won't be able to renew them if it's not owner occupied. Uh, but I think that that's really important that we get these sorts of changes in place before we build these homes, which they could end up just wanting people to live in these places, not going to be, you know.
They're going to be pretty close together too, knowing that the code is that they have to be within two hundred feet away from each other at least. So we'll never, it couldn't be fun.
No, that's true. Uh, but there's still could be a, you know, three or four of them.
Yeah.
And I think there are certain parts of that code that could be possibly more strict and other parts, I think they need to draw a distinct difference between um, vacation home, vacation home rentals and posted home shares. I think they should, they should restrict one, the, the vacation home rentals I were talking about can very much uh, change the dynamic of the neighborhood. And I think that was the main premise for putting in the restrictions. But what they, they put the same restrictions on posted home shares, which I believe have a, a positive impact to your neighborhood. You've got retired people who have vacant rooms, who have empty, you know, um, a way for them to help subsidize their income of early, of retirement. And also give them both, both the means and the incentive to upgrade their homes. Do landscaping, they got to keep it up nice because they're, they're getting people staying there. So I think, yes, we need to revisit that code and look at um, drawing that distinction, certain things you might want to make more strict, there's other things not asked in there.
Like allow.
Totally tied to the impacts.
If, if a homeowner has a ranch and is able to build an A D U, going on that.
You know, all of those changes that they're making, like directly related to try to address the need and the shortage of housing. I mean, so uh, you know, a lot of this, we can look for some examples from other communities that are going through the exact same challenges because it's your order. So a lot of people want to live here and it makes property really valuable. Uh, the other thing that they're doing though now is to try to, you know, uh, you know, they've got a new hotel going downtown, right? And they're trying to get the tourists out of the homes and into hotels. Uh, so I think that's just another piece of the puzzle, because we're looking at ways to, you know, you know, create your own house. You know, opportunities for people to live here in our community. That's something we have to think about as well.
To add on to what was being about, sorry, I was.
Well, I was going to say. One thing has to be revisited and redone is the I D A. The governmental agreement, it was made in twenty thirteen, ten years ago. And so before we get into all this, what we're going, what we're going to do, what the city's going to do, that I D A has to be redone.
Do you have specifics, uh, particularly what could be improved?
No, the whole thing probably has to be redone.
I mean, you have, you know, subjects that should be focused on in that.
Well, is that infrastructure, especially industrial parks?
Well, that, that's largely, once again, tied to our strategic business plan and what we intend to do with our business part. We have alluded to the fact that uh, we may be slightly changing direction, realizing that that industrial area has been sitting vacant for thirty years. And uh, and that's closely tied to uh, the vulnerability of our community and what do we want for long-term quality of life? Let's start there and then work backwards from uh, the types of businesses we're putting in, which will drive uh, another thing I'll point out in the, which is uh, our energy upgrade. You know, are we going to need, are we going to need thirty mega lots? Are we going to use uh, have huge power users or not? That will drive how much money we're spending on our uh, in, our different upgrades. What type of this infrastructure are we going to need depending on the types of businesses that we're putting in there? Or other developments, uh, you know, so uh, and the I P A is closely tied to uh, and the specific is tied to that. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're probably right, but not knowing uh, not knowing our end goal or how the city and port are working together, which will drive the I P X.
Well, we have a time constraint on the energy because we have a grant. Right. To upgrade that, uh, yes, which is, uh, to be funded for the plan and the, the plan that was uh, put in front of us. So uh, yes, I agree, there is a timeline that I would also say that uh, we still need to revisit exactly where we're headed with that because the funds are limited and so is the time.
So regarding the new, the new forty-five homes going in, has the city looked at or projected how much property tax revenue that they might be getting in the next year or two?
Yeah.
Like.
So something that we, that I want to reconsider everybody's time. Uh, something that is customary, but isn't necessarily something that we have to do or intend to wrap these meetings by giving everybody five minutes to have something to, to, to speak on something that they want to. Uh, if we were to do that tonight, that would put us right around the two hour mark. Uh, I want, I want, I want us to prepare for that, for where we start to wrap this meeting and then we go, well, let's give everybody a minute to say what they want. Which is another hour on this meeting. If, if we're at that point, it's something we want to do, we should probably start thinking about taking the meeting in that, that direction. Because I'm sure there may be a few things on people's mind that didn't make us generally, they have to say. I also think we're having a great discussion, we need to do that, but I think it's time to kind of take a little pause and say, are, are we at a good stopping point? Where we go to what is our customary? Are we going to throw the customary out tonight? Grant says it's over, it's over. Uh, anybody want to weigh on on that?
Well, I would say uh, I can pretty much forego most of mine because I have been shy about talking. But uh, anybody that uh, has heard your thoughts that they want to share and uh, they have your five minutes name, certainly allowed to uh, for an editor. However, however long it takes you to say uh, uh, things that you want to confirm uh, clearly I agree with.
Um, I guess before we get to the energy upgrade, I just want to go back to the thread that you all were talking about as far as the, the um, I guess basically Airbnb or Blackwell Better, you know, and then the new houses that are going in. I think both of you are right. There needs to be some sort of basically a nice uh, walking of a very strict line. One of the things that we had a lot of these individuals come and speak to us at the board specifically. And many of them, I would say more than half of them specifically said the two dilemmas that they have with working with our city is parking and places to stay. Um, specifically with the bridge where the gods run. The person that organizes it says that they don't even release the next dates because they have to get their own people to get a book of rooms at the hotel. Because one year they accidentally left it out early and the entire gorge was booked. So, and, and she said all the way from River Stevenson, White Salmon, everywhere is booked. So when there is thinking about of, you know, either making it more strict to rental properties or expanding it, we have to keep in mind that there are a lot of people that do want to come here from a tourism standpoint. There is a lot of potential opportunity for revenue for these individuals. So it can't be too strict that we remove all of the, that we create an extra obstacle for coming for visitors, but also for our, our residents.
So to, Jordan, maybe you can speak on this because we have a certain percentage that we're allowed, right? Right? Five percent, five percent. And so it's two hundred and fifty feet. But once we reach that five percent, then which were like two homes, right?
I mean, we're getting rid of this. Was it like nineteen homes had a permit out of twenty-four total of them?
Something like that.
Yes.
I may be wrong.
In, in our subdivision on the east end of town, the way that this subdivision is designed, for our homes, you can only have three homes in there within that hundred disposable. So I think you can feel like, should you look at, especially if you're going to have owner occupied where they can maintain the behavior of the tenants, stay there, uh, maintain and input by keep an eye on things and not become like a vacation party or whatever. Um, and consider, it also is an alternative way to make income in town where people don't work very. Uh, it's an opportunity for them to add an income source, so.
I'm just curious about the uh, events that really require more accommodations. Uh, I know like P C P days, we had a lot of camping events in place, right? Is that a model that can be utilized for some of the other events? Because I mean, like the cycle cross for the event, I can see a lot of people being open to camping at that event. Uh, maybe even like the marathon and, you know, the, uh, is that an option? I would say a lot of it is different audiences, right? Like P C P, a lot of them are hikers. They're very used to tents, they're used to that stuff. The cycle cross, they're a different audience. They probably require or request different accommodations. Probably not all of them want to sleep intense after they just did a huge bike race.
A request for like a spring or beam parking.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the audience and what they're, is just part of their accommodations or something.
I didn't know if that was optional, like, you have, we have the ability to do camping for P C P days, is there, I don't know how that takes place. I'm wondering some pimps. I know, but it's there. I mean, because it's some of those camping over the, I bet you for, right? I mean, so do we have to get approval from the school district to utilize that area or how does that happen? Did we camp at the school district?
No, they're, they're part of them. It's not supposed to be camping over at the school.
Yeah, it's a part.
They have to go through. That's a separate thing.
Could that be useful for other events?
Possibly as a party. That's, that's something I'm getting into this meeting with, but I think it's worth bringing up is that I think it's been a very productive meeting. It's good to hear a lot of these voices blend together, uh, especially in the room together. There used to be a once a month meeting called the Joint Economic Worker Group. And it was comprised of the board and of the state and of other outline agencies as well as a school, the community college, right? Anybody who's playing a role in this, in this town and, and especially sort of focused towards economic development. Uh, I know it's another meeting to attend. Uh, I also know that not every commissioner attended it, not every counselor attended, attended it. Uh, but it's one that has fallen by the wayside. And to hear some of these rooms, voices in the room blend and to not have one of our partnering agencies here to hear that and see the, see the collaboration that's occurring. To not have the school here right now, to not have the community college, to not have representation from the river, to not have started a presentation from somebody like Main Street, right? Uh, I think it was good. But it's certainly something that I'm going to take back to my commission is should the court start to bring that meeting back? Um, and.
I would say yeah. Very possibly, uh, having been on that uh, committee for a few years, I would say one thing that never came out of that meeting and maybe that's on us, uh, what we didn't end up with was an actionable plan. And that's, you know, we can have meetings all day long and we don't really, uh, you know, you can all let in each other and talk about it, but it's getting, it's, it's tying those next steps where, you know, which never seemed to come out of that uh, meeting. So if we didn't revitalize that and reintroduce that, then I would say let's work on something and we say, okay, here's what we need to do. We need to see about rewriting our parts of our development code or uh, for uh.
And that's going to, and then a lot of that's going to, a lot of that's going to play back on the administration, right? On us to go to these meetings and hear the voices to speak and then bring that back to my commission and say, hey, listen, the last J R meeting, we all heard this. Do we have any actionable items that you guys would like to see? Yeah, you can probably reach out to the community college. Yeah, I think there was something there. Get a hold of Jordan, right? That's the, that's, that's what's tough. That's what's tough. And all these different entities try to work together, especially at the leadership level, right? Especially at the leadership level is that you guys don't really have the, the ability as a single person to create change. You can as a board. So I think it's really important that you guys come back and boards and say, this is what we heard, saw, felt at that meeting. And these are some actionable steps we'd like to see you guys take. Um, so I, I think that's, I think just a way to get there is if you go to these meetings and, and they're worth your time, that they have to come back and be presented to administration or this is, this is what your next actionable steps are. We can do that. Um, but if it's just another meeting to go to, you're right, we're, we're wasting your time. Yes.
Yeah, having been.
You know, it's meeting.
Having been on that, it seemed more to me, the brief time I was on it before it got dissolved was that it was kind of just saying what, what you're up to, what you're doing. And that's it. It's like, I didn't see too much sharing. I know the childcare thing was brought up. And um, I don't remember the specifics from it, but I do remember some of the other organizations outside of Caskey Lots um, telling us of where we can go to try to get grant information. So that, that, that's the kind of thing that should be in the meeting. Uh, I mean, it's good to say, what are you working on, what's happening in your town, but it needs to go past that to be useful to everybody.
Agreed.
Right. I, I thought Commissioner Peterson had a good suggestion. If we could somehow come to an electronic shareholder, I am familiar with Google Drives, which would mean we would all need to create a non-personal virtual drive. And if you know that, it's easy, but maybe you're Microsoft Office, where we can say, heard this about housing and we put deadlines. This is where I said some kind of outline. Deadline February twenty twentieth to get this grant in. So that at our next meetings, we talk about anybody or here's what I heard, um, you know, about development, but you know, apparently Rolls Royce went into line? How'd they get that? I don't know, but uh, so how? How, how, how do we share this key information that sometimes is overwhelmed? We've all been to the, to the seminars on housing and that there's going to be huge state and national funds to help with affordable housing. But how are we getting it? And what are the key points? I know um, councilor. And what are the key points? I know, um, Councilor Happy does a nice job of bulleting. Key points, we're all learning. How not to be too, um. Verbous, maybe I'm I'm guilty. But to share those points in a way that they can become actionable steps, we either dismiss them. Or they, we we did not apply for transportation grants this year because we just didn't have time, we're doing the strategic plan, we're doing. And so then. As Main Street grows and we get more community involved. And if anybody is funding a grant writer or we are all finding bits of money for that. That might help us move forward because we obviously know a lot of the things we want to do are gonna cost money, so we can biggest plans in the world.
Do you use Microsoft three sixty five?
Yes, that's the new program.
Okay, so OneDrive is the same thing as Google Drive, it's exactly the same thing, so you can set. Um, permissions on shareable folders. Nice, they're exactly the same, I'm sure Ron was familiar with that, we can get something up.
It's a public document. You also have to say it's a form, if there's a decision being made and stuff like that, so.
Sharing it, yeah, just information, not sharing, yeah. B C D, B C D is sharing information, so it's not discussed until you have a meeting, but. Sure, I would love to know if. If Pamela went to a conference and. Learned about how to change the zoning of an area like. Out by Easy Climb to create a lodge and affordable housing at the same time and. Give space for these big events, but also maintain. The affordable housing that we need for our employees, because we know that's a huge problem.
That's an interesting challenge, one that I would probably talk to our attorney about, so that we make sure we are careful with some of the, uh. Of laws right around, adding chain meetings and things of that, we want to keep you guys out of hot water there. Uh, especially with actionable items, we want to keep you guys out of hot water there, right? Uh, no individual can direct, it can direct. Me or direct Jordan, right, it has to be a board decision that says, hey, we want you to move forward in these steps in these ways. The collaboration is amazing, it's the way it should work, unfortunately with the public. Or not, right, and depending on what your tape gets on it, it sure would be nice if government moved at that speed. But we also do have to be very careful that we're doing this the way that, the way that we're supposed to with those public record laws. And and just how these boards are set up, um, so it's good, I want to do it. One of the easiest ways to do it would be to push it through me as an administrator and have me push it out, right? Have me be that point of contact and says, hey, I'd like this to go out to the rest of the mission. Um, or I'd like this to go, I'd like the, I'd like the board to see this, and I think to Jordan or this. The the plus is always being that, being that conduit, you guys out. But I get it, I get the need to want to share information amongst each other, but we've got to be careful.
I took a real quick comment, I just want to say, I think it's known where the, you look around the table. Commissioners, you guys all have computers. You look at the city councilors and they've got our notebooks and, uh, you know, it's it's, I think it, you know, in order for us to coordinate effectively, we need tools to be able to do that. And so I do think it's, uh, something that. You know, you guys have provided a little bit of an example of, you know, go after those jam funds, that's, you know, that's how you guys paid for that. Um, we need to do something similar, uh, I think it's, we're a little behind the times, but I think it's kind of a foundational. Piece that's missing to make us more effective, but you all have all the props.
Take them back here, but, uh, letting everyone have the opportunity, because I know some of the people's kind of. Talk a little while, but I'm curious.
Yeah, 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 anyway, uh. Further thoughts, uh, we can start, let's go around the room. Let's start right in there and we'll go around, uh. Talk about this.
I guess my only thought is, I I feel like. A lot of the discussion and a lot of focus is on actionable day-to-day items. And as Mr. Happy elected to share with us on Monday, we're the, we're the big vision group. And I feel like. It's their job to do the day-to-day stuff, the the year-out stuff, it's our job to do the twenty-year stuff. And I, it's it's time-consuming to sit here and listen to day-to-day stuff. And like, you gotta have that big vision plan and how do we get to that plan? And correct them into that plan. And that's where I want to move forward.
And that's our goal, for, uh, with our speaking business plan, and really, uh, I don't think. Amongst entity, there is any shortage of idea of where we could be headed. And, uh, uh, like I said, the big, the big puzzle pieces, let's, uh, let's look at those big pieces that we. Can make a change on, whether it's rezoning, uh, finding funding for affordable housing, uh, you know, we have some. Uh, properties all over town, I think the court's been very successful at. Uh, any piece of property that we had control of in the downtown ports has gotten, uh, was put in business. And we've got another piece of property which, uh. You know, it's, it's worth, I think it was. One point two, we don't have nearly that into it, so. If we found the right business, it's really about finding the type of businesses in the town that will, uh. Really help the town and that will help us to grow and to really, uh, the people will notice, so, you know, uh. We don't have to get one by two million dollars for it, we have the right kind of business to bring in the right, uh. The right people and, uh, do the right things in the community, uh. We can be flexible and, uh, but the court's very focused on, uh, some of those. Those big ideas, the big plan of where we're headed. And as we work through our respective strategic business plan, I think. That'll be the first steps that every, all is going together.
Uh, I I will agree with that one hundred percent. Um, I do want to say that it's, uh. It's inspiring to get us together because I know that we all have the best for Cascade Loss. Um, no matter where our brains are going, but I know that we have the same intent. Um, one other thing I'd like to say is that it's important to know. What comes first, what comes second, what comes third, I do to agree with an infrastructure agreement or agreement between, but like Brad said. We have to know where we're going before we do something like that, so it's good to know what comes first, what comes second. And, um, I hope we can stay on that path. Thank you, everyone.
I I actually really appreciate that this is the first time we've all come together and I. Really look forward to doing a couple more of these, not more of these, more of these. I thought, uh, this is incredibly helpful, uh, I do understand that we are coming from, uh, Scheller, um, but. A lot of this is really, what is the foundation that we can create? For those twenty years out, and I think that today was a good step, um, in us at least opening. And having discussion around the things that we've all been talking about, we've all been thinking, um. Probably to each one individually or inherently to citizens, so it's nice to finally put it in the public arena, so, thank you all.
Okay. Really got a lot of our conversation tonight, I think, and I mean, can't. Spend too much time here, it's moving, I wrote down where, uh. The T L P common, all other cities, that was a really good thing you brought up, uh. Economic development, Chamber of Commerce, how to, how to be that director, reviewing our CDCs. Uh, reviewing the I J with the board, I think it's really, uh, as well. And, uh, the events, uh, main challenges with those events, the partner made accommodations, so I think, because we hit on a lot of real. Um, good topics that I think you're going to continue for some more future discussions, and I liked the idea of bringing back that, uh, monthly meeting. I definitely would like to support that. And I think that focusing on actionable items that really affect on the long-term. Plans for the city, uh, and for, for really, maybe the work involved, so excited to be continuing this.
Um, I have just, uh, one thing, Jordan, uh, Jordan, I guess, collaborating, getting coming up with a, uh, itinerary there. Um, and really just thank everybody for coming together, uh, it's, it's nice, I know the elections, that everyone was very committed and working together, and I really see that. Um, it sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page. Um, the city, we're working really hard to get our strategic plan done, completed. Uh, because that is the big, it's it's where you have to have some type of plan. In order to get grants or anything like that, and then we're working on all the logistics. I think one thing that is said over and over when we attend L C meetings, you come back. And I'm sure the court has similar meetings, but you come back and you hear like, there's a grant here, there's a grant here, and there's all these meeting things. But there's no roadmap on how to get it. And so, um, it sounds like both sides, we're all trying to get to that point, and so we can have actionable steps. Um, but this is a good start, um, just thank you really for the time and. Yeah, and I like, uh, we talked a lot about the chamber and different ways that we can come together and really create that as well.
Right, like I said, I've, I've said a lot already, but, uh, what she said. Uh, and I would say, yes, uh, you can swallow away one bite at a time, you know, and, uh, I think that's where we're headed. We're, we're gonna figure out, uh, what things can be accomplished and what's the timeline on those things that are gonna. You know, might be a little further out, but as long as you make incremental steps in that direction, eventually we'll get there. But, uh, thanks, everybody for coming, uh, this has been great.
Yeah, I appreciate the forum here, uh. Just to reiterate, like, we need to think about the Main Street deadline coming up, it's a little concerning that it's coming up so soon, so I want to. Need to be sure that I'm counting in as one of the. Participants, just as a citizen not representing the court, um, and help you however you need to get those seven people. Uh, I don't want to miss out on our ten million dollar grant, that potentially, yeah. All right. Right, okay, um. Another thing that we didn't really touch on, but because the season is coming up and it was kind of a big topic of discussion on Facebook. Uh, the holiday, uh, lights, I I would love to see. That, uh, holiday spirit growth in town and become more of an economic, economic development opportunity for our town. Uh, so. You know, not to move all the lights out of the park and, you know, all of this stuff like that, just. Add more, let's bring more people to town, it has a holiday destination, and how do we do that? Does it retire creating a subcommittee or can we utilize the tourism committee to help? Um, with that, like, allocate some funds to buy more lights or. Hiring a company that does the lights for us, stuff like that, so. Uh, just something that's been on the mind recently, just this this season. And would like to get ahead of it for, for November next year, so that we're not stepping in the same boat again.
If you want to have something to add.
Um. Thank you for, uh. Allowing me to join late, I rushed here from work and had. Uh, little small children things to deal with. Um, and I want to just thank everybody for. Putting this on, it it's been a little eye-opening, um, I think we do need to have. Some, another one of these that is a little bit more. Actionable items and less. Grand ideas, but this was a good start. Um, but that'll happen easier and better after everybody's strategic plans are finalized and. Moving forward. That's about all I have to say.
I just wanted to, um. Touch on just a couple of things, I really like the idea of buying up some or. Making some houses for key people that need to work here, one of, um, um. My biggest importance would be having a sheriff live in town. I mean, we spend so much money as a city paying for them to go back and forth on I E four. And if they didn't need to do that, that they'd be more here in town, but, um, I really like that idea. Um, the chamber, I really think is a good idea, um. My question was that when you guys were talking back and forth with. The head person, is that usually someone that lives in the town, is that what you found in the L C? The director of the chamber? Or is that someone that you're not, that is usually hired and we pay? It really, it really just depends, I mean, on coastal towns. You know, sometimes in a smaller town, it's hard to find stuff, that's what I was gonna say, so maybe it might be a neighboring coastal town, but. Um, it's just, you're hiring for jobs, okay, okay. Um, also a building for childcare. It would be on my dream list here, rather than, I mean, people doing it in their house is is great, many people have tried that, I have tried it about. A dozen years ago, um, but having a building actually. That would be a childcare center, um. Is on my wish list. And then, um, I'm just thinking we're doing all the. The main focus is to bring tourism in, and I know that it's important because that's where we get our money, um. As we get more residents living here, um, such as the forty-five houses that are being built. I would like to see a little bit of that focus to shift to things for residents who live here to do. Um, community picnic is an example of it. Um. And I know residents here, some of them go to PCT days, some of them don't care, um, and it's kind of a hit and miss. Uh, personally, I usually leave Cascade Loss to go do stuff. Um, Stevenson has lots of events that they do for residents of Stevenson. And, um, anyway, I'd just like to see a little bit more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, I just want to add that, um. What Councilmember Farrell said and Kuut, I I think that. The events that are happening in town can be. Thought of to add. The local piece to that event. And the tourism piece, I'm hoping that everything you listed and everything that we do, and as, um. Commissioner Kuut said, the holidays, to be. Put on a calendar with tourism and with the city and with the park well in advance, so planning can happen, so businesses can say, oh. We're gonna turn the lights on this day, maybe we will have an event that night, or maybe we will add. So, the earlier we plan and get this on a calendar. The more that can be done, and I'm hoping Main Street would be a part of that on a paid position, I agree with. Councilmember Farrell on some of the needs that our community wants, it's been on the the childcare, the employee housing, and that's gonna come out in our strategic plan as well. Uh, I am. We do have a charter rewriting committee now, so. Again, I ask this court, I know you're quite busy, but if. If we could have. One court person interested in that, it's that. Person that. On both sides, and again, courts have subcommittees, maybe one of us could go. And without. That in particular, possibly, is it possible to have a court report at the council meetings and we give you a council report just a quick? And maybe we could, as we begin to do this, add what is important, like. Here's our question to the city, uh, and also, do you have a mentor or what is the advice person, so? So that might be a nice communication, um. And I noticed that the L C housing. Seminars, they are saying. We need to be involved with the county and the state to also look at code changes and, um. And working with developers, did? Did? The developer at the new. Forty homes pay for the infrastructure from the street in? And we just got it to the street?
They pay for it.
They pay.
They pay for it, they pay to hook up to our main line, maybe we don't put any into it.
And that has been advised, we need to start working with developers, because I know infrastructure is huge. And and being creative and as, um. General Manager Blue said, um. That some of these, the land that we do have is. Cities in the L C are saying, let's get creative with our developers, what can we offer them economic? Um, incentive, tax-wise or other things? In order, they've been, and they sometimes can get one of these seminars that they can sometimes get the loan in advance. To pay for that, where we can't carry that burden. Right now, so just thinking about developers as well, and do we have someone seeking help developers?
Thank you, uh, yeah, this meeting was great, I I know it's a little overwhelming, I think, looking at the agenda, we didn't quite follow it, uh, but. I think it was portrayed in a way that was useful, that helped us kind of see. I think it was portrayed in a way that was useful, that helped us kind of see you know, what are the urgent uh, things that we'd like to see? Uh, one key thing about looking at all the events listed there is a lot of foot traffic, a lot of opportunities that we can work together to improve, a lot of lodging opportunities, a lot of housing needs, uh, the fact that childcare is needed, and uh, also looking at the air government, governmental agreement. Take a look at that and review and see what needs to be improved. Thank you Denise for bringing up the Main Street thing, uh, I know it's been a discussion point for like the past year, but it's, it seems like we'll probably get some more traction this year as we get more residents in town. Uh, Eric, you know, I agree with you on how we're just talking about very specific things, but we're not really turning things into actionable strategies that I think the courts, strategic planning, they're gonna have the next couple of months, gonna help us uh, get some more uh, in alignment with the seed and moving forward. I know you guys have gone through, the city has gone through their stuff already, but you know, we're kind of new to it, so it's coming soon, uh. As far as, uh, I think it would be helpful if everybody on the city and the board had a better understanding of what their budget looks like for the next twelve months, what we're able to spend. I, I still have questions about what we have in certain departments, our budgets work, when does our grant money come, all that stuff, so that's a key thing. Uh, I was glad to see on social media that, you know, this whole holiday lighting thing, uh, maybe we're still able to come together and still plan an event to make it work and uh, get everybody's feedback. Um, and as far as this meeting, I think it would be helpful to have every two months, uh, considering that we'll have a lot of new residents coming in next year, I think it gives us a lot of opportunity to start making those early plans, uh, and start planning what we're, we're set up to do, so thank you everybody for attending, Jeremiah and Jordan, we're putting this together, so have an all, thanks to everybody on.
Okay, uh, any last thoughts, uh? Anybody, uh, or?
I certainly think I have other things to take back to my connection, so I appreciate that.
Jeremiah, hey, come on.
What, what's that?
That, that is a community event, I'm happy, I'm happy to provide a billion for it.
Very, very good, thanks for.
But no, the childcare, the meeting, there was actually, we put a daycare center in church, next to City Hall. At staff line up, the building didn't meet the codes to be a daycare, so D L C D is actually creating a statewide board looking at codes and land use in terms of daycares. And uh, City Court Wusley has put an application on that, that committee, so.
Great.
They are, they're attempting to move forward.
Good, all right, well, uh, if you're nothing further than uh, we told you to make a motion to the Bureau. I, I wish to appear. All right, good, and we did a vote with the Bureau, the uh, city as well. I think they do.
Yeah, listen to that.
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Both, we're good.